Good evening, everyone. Today is February 12, 2025, and this is a meeting of the Gloucester School Committee. We are meeting at the Gloucester High School. The public is welcome to attend our meetings in person or alternatively through the Zoom link provided on the agenda. The meeting notice will reflect that the meeting is via Zoom only. As the recent amendments to the Youth Meeting Law allow, the school committee may continue to hold meetings remotely. Please note that in-person meetings can be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt their remote connection. To order and state that the commission of Gloucester Public Schools is for all students accessible from the online doors. And they ask that you join me. I think it's Laura. Okay. I ask that we do introductions so people at home know things around the table. And then we can start with Mike.
So I'm Dr. Michael Jarvis, Director of Special Education in Gloucester Public Schools. We're trying to log on right now. Everything's not working yet.
Okay, we'll find it. Amy Pasco, Lieutenant Superintendent.
Jeremy McCain, School Committee.
Lauren Deason, School Committee.
Melissa France, School Committee.
Kathy Clancy, School Committee.
William Mollum, School Committee.
Keith Minino, School Committee.
Greg Berg, Mayor, School Committee.
Stephanie Dolan, City Recording Secretary.
And online we have?
Gary Frisch, CFO.
Great. Okay, thank you, everyone. First item of the business is oral communications. If there is anyone that would like to address the committee, now is your opportunity to do so. I will read that the public shall have the opportunity at every regular school committee meeting to be heard under oral communications. Oral communications shall allow any resident who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to the school committee business to appear before the school committee, state their problem without debate, and the matter may be referred to the proper subcommittee. For items that are on the agenda, members of the public may address the committee with the permission of the chair. Persons speaking under oral communications shall be limited to three minutes each and shall submit a copy of their prepared communication to the department secretary. So if there's anyone at home, you would raise your hand, and if there's anybody here, you can just... So we have one person. Go for it. Once this week here.
My name is Sean Lilly, and I reside at Fort Highfield Road in Rockport. I'm a teacher in the Life Skills Program here at the high school, and I have the honor of being a member of the Union of Gloucester Educators. My understanding from my brother and sister educators that administration has been asking around other schools like this about the current morale of our educators. My answer to questions about our morale is another question. How can you possibly ask a question like that when the answer is obvious? In these three-month efforts conclusion, this body of administration continued to go out of their way to include the word "illegal" when talking about the strike we educators were compelled to undertake in November. It's a reminder of whom this body of administration places 100% of the blame for the work stoppage on and attempts to cast those educators not as principled professionals who voted to strike as a matter of conscience, but as unprincipled scofflaws. How do you suppose that affects the morale of educators? We have repeatedly, in this forum and others, called upon this body to make some kind of acknowledgement of its role in bringing about the strike, that the decision to strike was not an arbitrary whim on the part of educators, but a difficult and understandable choice that we honestly felt was the right thing to do for ourselves and our students in response to school committee policy and behavior. And before anyone even thinks, well, you have to be held accountable for your role in the strike too, we already are, quite literally, to the tune of fines including a $90,000 bill to a $90,000 bill to a K R firm that we're going to be paying off until roughly the Friday after the second coming. It's expensive fighting an imbalance of power. How do you suppose that affects teacher morale? We have students whose I A Ps are still out of compliance because we are still understaffed, including still not having an O T specialist. It is February. How do you expect that? How do you suppose that affects teacher morale? Related to that, and worst of all, we have educators giving their notice in droves since their return to work. Many of them are special education teachers and counselors who just don't see their situation getting better and see no urgency from this body or administration to make it better. Seemingly every day, we lose another skilled educator, another veteran educator, another devoted educator, another educator we admire and cherish, another good friend, who couldn't keep coming to work with a knot in their stomach, and we couldn't believe them. How do you suppose that affects teacher morale? It should be obvious to anyone and everyone in this district what the state of teacher morale is, but let me make a clear distinction. While our morale as educators may be low, our morale as members of the U G E is as high as it's ever been. Our unity, our passion, our resolve, our fire for speaking truth to power to hold this body and all Gloucester elected officials accountable for standing up for one another and our students continues to be immeasurable, not merely in spite of low morale, but actually because of us. Gloucester educators are down, but its union will see to it that we are not out and never will be. It fought yesterday, it fights today, and it will fight tomorrow. It should not be seen as an excuse to keep doing and not doing what has kept it low, but we are more than tough enough to handle low morale.
I see one person with... I'll go online first, since like, Janelle, do you, Janelle Jackson, online, do you want to speak? Yeah. Janelle, you're...
Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, Janelle, you can go ahead.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Janelle Jackson. I live at 6 Sea View Road in Gloucester. I am here to say that something needs to change. We are drowning. Look at all the open positions that we currently have. It has become an epidemic. You can't ignore it. We keep asking and begging for resources and staffing to solve the glaring issues that are missing, but we're not being listened to. You don't even think that anything is wrong. Educators are leaving not just for monetary benefits, but because their needs are not being met, and they're not being listened to. Your way isn't working. We can't be any clearer. Teachers come to you with countless ways and ideas to fix problems that exist in this district, but it's always met with defensiveness or dismissal, or the latest has been that our ideas get stolen, like the city stealing the union's "out of town beach sticker" idea as a means for more city revenue. That was a great idea, wasn't it, Mr. Mayor? You're welcome. Teachers know the needs of this district. They spend all day with students. They know what works and what doesn't. When are teachers going to be listened to? This is why they're leaving. There's no respect. You can't even hold a promise made to longtime employees who retire after 20 years each. They were told before they even left that they would get retro for the time they worked without a contract, and then you went back on your word to them and used them as part of a return-to-work agreement that they had no business being part of in the first place. They had already been gone and retired for two months by that point. They weren't returning to work. You may as well have had said that the 2024 graduating class can't keep their diplomas either. It's the same thing. Both had no part of the strike whatsoever and shouldn't have been used as a pawn in the union's return-to-work agreement. We signed it, yes, because at the time, we never thought that retirees were even being dragged back in. And once we found out and we asked you guys to please let them get their retro pay, you said, oh, we said, no, we can't go back now. It would set a precedent. Yeah, it would. That precedent would be that, yes, we do care about our people, and we want to show them that we care about our longtime employees and respect them. That would have been a great gesture. And gestures like this are why people look for and what they look for in a place to work. They want to feel valued and respected. So when you wonder why so many people are leaving, you can play back my comment as a reminder. So with all due respect, until things in this district really and truly change, and not just words, but by actions, people are going to continue to look elsewhere for employment, and it's a sad reality. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. You may speak. Thank you for your patience.
Hi, I'm Beth Schabner. I am at A M Pleasant Ave in Gloucester. I've been coming to these meetings for years, and what I continue to see is two entirely separate conversations, like a mess. We're not talking about the same issues. For example, I hear almost every meeting, this committee bringing up concerns about achievement scores, but a failure to mention the cause of these low test scores that the teachers are repeatedly bringing to your attention. You can form committees to talk about data, but poring over it isn't going to change the facts. We also want better achievement scores. We are in agreement on this. But especially us in the lower elementary levels. We need two things in particular that I'm going to reiterate for you again. The first is behavior support. This committee seems to turn a blind eye to a glaring issue. And I get it, it's a tough solution. We have limited resources, and it's not easy. But ignoring this problem will not make it go away. The mental health of our students has been deteriorating for a long time, and we need to start talking together about real and long-term solutions now. I promise that time on learning and achievement scores will all increase if we can effectively meet the needs of students when they're in crisis. The second issue is interventions. At just West Parish where I am in second grade, the paras in the Title IX positions that were cut last year have already left us with limited resources and very limited reading interventions and zero math interventions. We, on top of that, the paras that do teach these small groups are pulled for coverage more often than not. I don't know if this is an issue with substitutes, getting substitutes, staffing, I don't know, but it needs to be fixed because we can't continue to claim that we use an R T I model when in reality it's not happening. It should go without saying that when struggling students don't receive targeted small group support, the achievement gap widens, and there's no answer to that besides bringing back the small group support that we were used to having for years. So I ask you now, as we move into planning next year's budget, how are you going to partner with us? What steps will you take to effectively advocate for the needs of our schools? Small actions on your part will go a long way to build trust back between us. For instance, transparency around your decision to not honor those retired paras who worked a full year without a contract. And finally, what are your next steps if the budget is rejected by the city? Again, we can't continue to point fingers at each other. We need to come together for solutions. But right now, we're not even having a cohesive conversation about what the issues even are. Again, we understand there's no quick fix, but I ask that you start by acknowledging our concerns, and you begin to demonstrate a willingness to partner with us so that we can move forward together. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. I see... No. Oh, Janelle is still...
Sorry.
Okay, all right. So I see no more hands raised and nobody else is present. Thank you all for your comments. We will move on to recognitions. Anybody have any recognitions? I, okay.
I went to the 101 Dalmatians a couple days ago, and it was...
And I was there today?
Yeah.
In the morning, which was an awesome time to see the play.
I think, is it one more night, or is it tonight?
Tonight.
Sorry. So you guys want to leave the meeting?
I think there's one tomorrow night, too.
Okay.
Oh, there is one tomorrow night.
Yes, yes, it's delightful.
Just want to recognize the high school, I think it was the high school band that performed at the G F fundraiser. They did a great job, kind of set the tone for the whole event, and really great to see them.
Next item of business is, oh, we do not have, as far as I was told here, for the student... We don't have any students. I heard from Ray and Mary that she did not think anybody was going to be able to come to that. So I see her on, but I'm just going to check the attendees, and I don't... She's there. Okay, so, all right, and we, yeah, our student advisors are busy. I'm sure we're all sorts of good and productive things. Next item of business is consent agenda. Does anybody have any items they would like to remove? I know that we approved the consent agenda as presented. Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Deliberations on education issues and superintendent's report. And the superintendent is not able to be at the meeting this evening, so I think Superintendent Vence Torrello is taking the lead. So... The superintendent, let me start to everyone. Every day in Gloucester Public Schools, every day matters. Everybody belongs. And some updates. I'm going to do some updates from around the district, and then we're going to circle back to the G H S competency determination because there'll be a vote on that later in the meeting, and then Dr. Jarvis will give us a special education update. So first, I'm talking about our youngest students. We're going to be welcoming to Gloucester Public Schools. Kindergarten registration is now open. There are information nights at all four of the elementary schools. Children who are five years old on or before August 31st are welcome to register for kindergarten. We are eager to welcome them to our community. The registration packets are available at all elementary schools on our website and of course at our administrative office. At O'Malley, academically, the students have just finished access testing, and that is the testing for our M L students to understand their language acquisition levels. And they've been working really hard on that. They've done a great job. This week, the K P N Museum, eight graders, were looking and learning from historical maps from Gloucester with a guest artist, Leslie Davidson. And they will make personal representation maps to be part of a large show that will be on display at CAM later this spring. At West Parish, as Mayor talked about, those 101 Dalmatians is happening. Their fifth graders have also did beams and bridges for a Indigenous American engineering. They had a special guest, will be having a special guest coming. Whitton Wisdom, this is on West Parish's page, but it's across all four elementaries. We're having half-day releases for each, all the grade levels to talk about Whitton Wisdom and continue to develop their pacing and really kind of understanding all of the modules. And also about 101 Dalmatians, we want to make sure that we thank Gloucester Ed Foundation and the West Parish P T O for sponsoring and showing that it is. This is just the M C A S schedule for parents to know. It's out there. And we'll be starting at the elementary level in April and go right through till the middle of May. That's for all elementaries. At Beeman, they just completed, well, all schools actually have completed the winter benchmarking, but Beeman is reporting on that. And all teachers will attend math data meetings to analyze the results and some, and address interventions that will be coming up. Beeman is getting ready. They begin auditions for their fifth-grade play, which will be Annie Junior, and it will be premiering on April 10th at Gloucester Stage. Plunkville had its winter concert on Friday, the 31st by our new, their new music teacher, Penny Singh. Best name for a music teacher ever. Our third grade, third graders at Plunkville are learning a game called Goal Ball in P E class with Mr. Feely. They have a student that is some vision impairment, and so they had a visitor from the Paralympic team talk about that. And this game is to kind of simulate what it feels like to have a vision impairment. So it's really embracing the whole school and on inclusiveness and understanding of people that have different challenges. It's wonderful to see. At East Spectrum, on the early release, the E S Ps learned more about elevations, which is a platform that we have to really support our M L learners and our teachers and how to better support them as learners and to understand what they're capable of and how to challenge our M L learners. And that was also for teachers as well. There's also, there was collaboration on language objectives, which is another focus for our multilingual learners, but also for all learners that when we have a learning objective, whether it be in math or science or E L A or whatever it is, there's the objective of what you're learning about. You might be learning about World War II, but there is also a language objective that could be on there. Maybe you're learning how to speak, studying a speech and how to talk about that. So we're interweaving multiple kinds of objectives into lessons. That's wonderful. And then Taylor Swift, if you notice in this top picture, here she is visiting the kindergartners on her late teen Super Bowl. It was, I think, a life-size little hat over her, and it was so nice of her to come. She did not stop by the district office. I didn't get to see her, but she did see the kindergartners. So there they are in that nice picture. At G H S, National Honor Society tutoring is available in the library Mondays and Wednesdays after school. And the College Board A P program has awarded Gloucester High with an A P Computer Science Female Diversity Award for expanding the women's access to computer science. G H S is one of only 37 schools to receive this award. And special thanks to Kyle Linehan, along with the computer science teachers, math teachers, school councils, counselors, and students and families for the well-deserved credit, as well as our Gender Equity and STEM Club, led by Eric Lee and Rosie Luvadale, help promote gender equity in STEM. Also at the high school, they are currently finishing up mid-year exams, and they will be celebrating World Language Week on the week of February 18th through the 21st. So as I was watching the Super Bowl, I was very surprised because I was out of the loop to see, I'm going to brag, I had Vito in kindergarten at East Gloucester, and I said, why is Vito on the Dunk Kings commercial? So our very own Vito Giacalone was a star. He was, his name was Bert in the, in the commercial for our... Oh, no, he was Bert, it was from his Mary Poppins display last year in fifth grade, excuse me. But then he starred in the Dunk Kings Two Super Bowl commercial with Ben Affleck and Casey Affleck and Bill Belichick and a whole host of others, and he did a great job. So, so proud of Vito. And it must have been a nice walk into O'Malley, I presume, on Monday morning after that. At the high school, the Navy Defense Cadet Corps celebrated on January 25th. And here's some lovely pictures of them doing their drill team and as they competed in Springfield. We've talked before about Carisolus, which is a resource we have available to our students and families and employees and our employees' families that helps connect people that are looking for mental health support. It's not the mental health support itself. It will connect them, people to providers. It will take into account their insurance to make sure that we're connecting them to the providers that are covered in their, whatever insurance they might have. And we want to recognize Becky Nastandra, who got an award from Carisolus as being a high referral guidance counselor. So she is definitely utilizing this support and helping many of our families and students to, to seek the support and get the support that they need. This is such a great resource. I mean, so many families can't connect. They sit in emergency rooms and can't connect. Right. We have someone here that can... And, and their, their connection time is significantly faster than other places. It's, it's a wonderful resource. And we have that largely because of our partnership with the Gloucester Health Department.
And how do families, since we're talking about how the families access this?
So there's a link on our website that you can, you can call or send in it. You can go online and sign up. You can reach out to any of our guidance counselors or adjustment counselors, any of those buildings, and they will help you get support. Our principals are aware of it. They can help with that as well. So it's also anonymous. So they go on our website and they, they seek support. They get, they maintain their privacy. We just received stats of how many referrals might have come through Gloucester Public Schools and basic data that we might have a certain percentage of that is anxiety versus depression versus... This is apparently in here twice. So G H S mid-year exam schedule, this is a nice little infographic that talks about what they've been doing. Oh, and in addition for support, the G H S School Counseling has scheduled a wellness week. So as you see, on Monday, they had a cram jam study break and a snack with some study tips. On Tuesday, they had cocoa and coloring. And on Wednesday, today, they had a yappy hour, which was place, come play some games and visit the hydration station and pet our furry friend. So a little social-emotional support during that stressful time of midterms. So it's a wonderful thing that the Guidance Counseling has put together for Gloucester students. That's the update. And I just want to speak to this. You'll come back to it later when you vote on action items. We presented the competency determination looking at my last meeting, and there was a request, I'm going to skip to the last slide here, to add a specific wording about passing the courses for it to happen. So if you notice here, course requirements, credits are earned by receiving a passing grade in the course. So what you will be voting on is the exact same presentation that you received last time, with the exception of this additional language. Okay? Any questions on that? Seeing that, okay. Next, we have presentation, Dr. Jarvis on special education.
So it's been seven and a half months for me, so it's, it's been exciting. It's just been an honor. There's been some tough times, some turbulent times, and there's been some great times. And I think seven and a half months has given me a dipstick, and as I said, I would, I'll do this off-dotted. Look at what we do, why we do it, how we do it, what we don't do. And that's a lot about what I'm going to talk about here tonight. So this will be our planning as we roll forward into next year, but really it's going to be multi-years for it as part of this. So it's, where my mind goes, I like to work backwards. Where do we want to be? Right? So where do we want to be? We want to improve outcomes for all students, right? Because it's education. It's not just special education. It's education and value-added special education. So it's improving outcomes for all students, finding staff, finding programs, finding paraprofessionals, related services, and leveraging them in high leverage points. That's largely what we're going to talk about here tonight. So in doing so, it's really important to, all right, by, by the law, now we just do, stay with compliance with I D E A or F R O, but it's important that we take in that law, legislation. And there are three main components to that with a continuum of service. That continuum of service is right out of that, a provision out of I D E A. And it goes threefold. So it talks about inclusion, so the services in the general ed setting. You can pick a variety of roles, including co-teaching, where you have a general education teacher, special education teacher, where the services go to the child rather than the child go to the services. So there's all kinds of current benefits with that. We'll talk about. There are students in the general ed setting that also receive services, especially related services, O T, P T, physical therapy. And sometimes that could be done in the general ed setting, and sometimes that could be done in the subsegment setting or academics in the general ed setting. Now, tertiary level, we have sub-separate programs, intensive programs, a clinical design for them to target a population of kids. So that's our continuum of services and programs. So it's mandated to have that spread for what a range of students needs. So as I mentioned, the clinical design is of the utmost importance. Is that, is, is that for each program, we've got to make sure that it's, it's being leveraged in the appropriate way, what our population is telling us. So when I say clinical staff and clinical design to a program, it's our clinical staff that helps inform that. So, so occupational therapy, physical therapy, speech and language, reading specialists, special educators, special educators that have a nuanced understanding of kids with autism, a nuanced understanding with kids with emotional disability, and a whole host of other ranges of manifestations of categories of disabilities. So our programs really have to have that clinical design to be viable.
Mike, do you want a question now, or do you want to...
Let it fly away. Yeah.
One, inclusion in the general education setting using co-teaching. Just unbox that for me for 10,000-foot view. What, what does that look like in the classroom? ten thousand foot view. What, what, what does that look like in the classroom?
Yeah, so inclusion is the umbrella for that. So in that, what that means is that, that a child attends, they gen- the general education classroom, whether they have a disability, not have a disability, and the service of inclusion could come through the shape of a consultation. So that's where specialists that will consult, a general education teacher, or it could also, which would be more powerful, is have a co-teacher there. So you'd have a general education teacher and a co-teacher, special education co-teacher, with the idea that general education teacher has the knowledge of um certification, the knowledge of the content. The special education teacher has the, the knowledge, the skills and strategies to access and make effective progress with evidence-based practices for all kids in that environment.
We have that, right? We have that at Veterans?
We have it in pockets.
Pockets, okay.
Yeah.
Principal Cook entered the, you know, presentation earlier today, actually talked specifically about how it's working at the high school, which seems to be.
It's exceptional.
Yeah.
It's exceptional.
Yeah, that's what triggered my question is what is it?
Yeah.
Just trying to think of what it was.
Well-established. How I know that is I did a professional development. So I got to interact with the cohorts. And so the judging by the feedback that I got, I mean, they're, they're in the know with really what we should be doing for kids. There's less stigma on that. Um, it's, it, it can be a really robust delivery of special education services. And it's, it's beneficial for all kids, in evidence-based practices. So um, so district programs are an opportunity for students to receive robust information in the home community. Right? And it's in a, in a, it gives them an opportunity to stay here and not have an over-reliance on out-of-district placements. We don't have control on what happens in an out-of-district placement. We do have control on what happens here. Right? It's, it's a marked difference, you know? Um, and then, um, it builds opportunities for kids who have been in an out-of-district placement to also return to the district. I can talk more about that in that approach. So some of the determining factors, um, as I was dip-sticking in for these past seven and a half months. So I looked at um who we are, what we do, what we do well, what we don't do, what are the gaps, and how well we do we do it. So across the whole range of our special education services, and again, it's all through that lens of, of that continuum of services. Where are there gaps with programs? Where are there gaps with services? And how do we, how, how do we um address those gaps? I looked closely at the, the district programs, looked at the profiles of, of the district programs, that students are attending the district programs. Um, and um, I looked at the methodologies that are applied for um the district programs. Um, and, and for that matter, for any of our inclusion programs, um, I went over that kind of observation as well. So I did an analysis of, of who's getting services for district programs, who's getting services for services only, related services, like speech and language, occupational therapy, physical therapy. Um, and I did an analysis of, of the incoming pre-K, because there's been a, a spike and a growth for eligible students at pre-K. So um, and I also looked at the, the category of, of specific learning disability. Under that category, it's dyslexia, um, listening, it's also um could impact, negatively impact um dyscalculia, so math problem solving, mental calculations. So that's the largest category statewide and for the district as well, for kids who are eligible for special education services. So I wanted to look at what's going on there. What, what, what are, what is the biggest category of disability statewide and in the district? What are we doing about that? Um, I also um dip-stick with some parental feedback. So that was a lot of anecdotes. Um, what's to come is there, it's going to be a survey that goes out with every team meeting. So that will be happening in on the parent's experience with their child listening special ed services at the team meeting. And in general, on a day-to-day basis. It's an important data point because we need to be responsive to what parents have to say and their experience. We have to be adaptive as an organization. Otherwise, we're not doing our job well. So we'll have that survey generated. That'll be part of our practice that I will analyze so that the program leaders will be able to um make changes and it, and it'll help inform um what are the needs our teams and our buildings um need to provide for parents. So staff feedback. So this started way back in July. Um, I met with every building principal. It was really exciting for me um to meet them and talk with them and just listen. Really listen to what is going on in the building. What are their needs? That was really my first um, um, creation of depiction of really what um, what I'm seeing here to date is that feedback from building principals. I also got a chance, I saw some teachers that were in um, working in their classroom, doing whatever. I got a chance to talk to a few of those teachers just the same. Um, and so those meetings and the one-off conversations have been very really fruitful for me to pulse check in on, on what's going on here at Gloucester Public Schools. I also have weekly meetings. Um, there's a bit of marathon meetings with my program leader, special education program leaders. There's so much content and skill acquisition that we need to be as high-performing teams and a high-performing department. So they are about two-hour-plus meetings. Um, and sometimes um, it, it can, yeah, I guess it can go a little bit long. Um, but it's intense, right? So it, they give me what's going on uh on a daily, on a weekly basis of what's happening outside of one-off emails to me or, or texts or SOS or whatever it is. So those are really important for me to dip-stick in to what's going on in the buildings. Um, I also instituted clinical meetings, which have been very fruitful with information of, of what we do. So the clinical meetings for every district program, I've been meeting with. Um, there's still a few I haven't yet met with, but I've been meeting with some of the um more intensive needs and the ones that had um some would just say some issues with turnover perhaps. Um. So those clinical meetings have given me um a good depiction in on what the students' profiles are, what they do, why we do it, what do we do well, what are the gaps. So I hear right from the practitioners in on that. So that's the speech and language pathologists, the teacher, that's part of the district program, um, assistant building principal, if they're involved there at the school and uh or have one, um, and or the building principal just saying. And then lastly, the, the, the budget meetings. So I've had those budget meetings. That's where we have this blended conversation from um the administrators, administrators from each building and from central office. And it's really an open dialogue. And I'm talking about a lot of this stuff. So that's, those are the kind of determining factors to where um um it brought me to these next lenses. I use three lenses and I'll have findings with these lenses. So the main three lenses, we have, um, I wanted to look through, um, yeah, aforementioned, I looked through the lens of effective evidence-based practices. Right? That's our calling. We need to be doing that. Proven meas- measures for outcomes for students. Second one was one of our cut practices. Second lens, and our third lens is um are there gaps in programming vertically and horizontally? Vertically by grade, horizontally um by school, with multiple grades, like elementary schools. So on the first lens, effective-based practices. So we need to build and, and make stronger our clinical design for our inclusion practices and for, for our district programs across the board. It's not that anybody's doing a bad job. It's not that. We just, I think that clinical meetings was a big part of the district in the past. I think they may have had some of that, but this is a measured intent and on really what we do, why we need to do that, matching up student profiles to methodologies that we know work. Right? That's for our inclusion program and our district programs. That's a need, and that's, that work's already underway. It has been, but that's certainly a need um as I dip-stick for the last seven and a half months. Our practices, uh, what I found is that there's an over-reliance on substantially sub-separate. We're pulling kids out of the general education classroom at an enormous rate. So when we pull kids out of the general ed class, general education classroom, what we get is that we get an opportunity to get um smaller group instruction. But is that the cost of missing instruction? Right? So are we catching kids up? I question that. So what, so we have an over-reliance in on sub-separate and using that um as a go-to service. In some of our district programs, um, whether it was designed default, I'm not sure. It's the past, we're moving forward. Some of them were duplicative, right? So district programs need to be specialized into what they're doing. Otherwise, we're gonna run out of resources. So that needs to be, especially at the elementary level. We can't have the same kind of program in every building because it'll overstretch our resources. And then we'll have other kids that won't have an opportunity, cohort of kids that won't have an opportunity to have that special uh programming that would be needed. So it's really important to have specialization with our district programs. Yeah.
Uh, thanks, Mike. Uh, quick question. Is the conventional wisdom to service kids i- in the class versus pulling them out of class? I mean, is there, is there, is there a kind of, well, this seems to be the best way to do it.
So right now, there is some inclusion going on. So through consult model, a consult model, but also through some direct instruction through some co-teaching. It's, 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 it's not, um, it's not, it's not robust in the way of the number of teachers that are doing that. More teachers than not, the default is pulling kids out. So it exists. The high school, there's, there's a, there's a, like, they're the leaders of the district, I would argue, in the way of co-teaching those. From what I've seen in classrooms and, and judging by what um professional development I've provided.
Yeah. And my second question was, uh, I wrote down the word profiles to methodology. Sounds like that's kinda, that's kinda, so you're matching up the services that the kid needs, the student needs with the methodology to, to deliver that.
That's right.
And that too, I mean, uh, are you saying that maybe that's been an area that has that we need to focus more on or target a little bit more?
I think we need to strengthen them. Yes. So it's, I think it's not, it's not known, but it needs to be strengthened, I see.
Well, okay. So I, I've been jotting questions, but I'll just take this moment. Um, so from the last slide, just out of curiosity, um, you talked about getting parent feedback.
Yeah.
Just out of curiosity, I mean, do parents fill out these, I mean, how much feedback do you get from parents?
So the survey has, so I, um, I have, I will do some more edits with um the staff. So I, I'll, I'll just come from me. I want to make sure it's responsive to really what our staff and what we're, as a body, what we want. So I haven't been using those yet. I will be.
But typically, I mean, in a tip, I don't know, in your past, I mean, I'm just curious if um, if that's a good way to get information. I don't know.
Um, so it had, so twelve years at Penn Tuckett as director. So yes, it was very fruitful. Because it can be anonymous, or it can be, uh, or they can write their names. It's up to them.
So I think we've had some experience with it being done with online. I mean, I think we've had certain experiences where there are things like sort of structural things that can make it operative things that can.
Yeah. So uh, I had the best luck with the, the hard copy.
Okay.
And the reason why, uh, the strategy for that, um, to get, to yield the, the greatest return um was to send it out with an IEP, annual review, three-year eval initial. And so it's right there. They know they have to return that. So here's this other form. Okay, I could spend a little time on this and they go right in with that. That was the best strategy I had for that. I've had other folks that have also scanned those in. Um, and so other folks that noted it anonymously without a name on them. So it's really important to hear from the parents.
Right, of course.
Yeah. And I, I'm open to other um avenues to.
I was just curious what kind of, you know, how often people actually fill those out.
Yeah. That was a high yield, my experience.
Um, so I had a couple more. So, um, I also was thinking about the student profiles you talked about.
Yeah.
I mean, are student profiles, and this is, you know, are they, are they consistent over time? I mean, are we building programs for students with the current profile, right? And then that profile changes over time, like the need changes?
Yeah. So what you've just described just blew my slides up. No, so it's, it's what I call, it's the district renewal process, district program renewal process. Our programs can't remain static. They have to adapt to what our population is telling us. So that the dynamic tension will be, like, what's the mission of the diet? I'm gonna go through all that. Of a program that exists up against what the population is telling us. So we can't stay static in a program and have our population profile say that we need something else here. And I, I don't understand why how many kids going out of district. Like, that's because our programs need to probably adapt. And, and so that's really important that we do this annually. It's not static work. It's, it, it needs to have that dynamic tension in on what we have and what, and what the information is coming in and what we need to change.
Right, because you mentioned there's a spike in pre-K.
Yes.
So that's already, you know, that's a big piece of information coming in for our preschool and our elementary schools.
Yeah. So um both depth and breadth and needs and numbers. Yes.
And then my last question, which may be a little off, as I'm a parent of an elementary and middle school, which you should know. So I totally hear what you're saying about pulling kids out too much. And I wonder, as a parent, like, when you don't pull kids out, if, depending on what the issue is, and if it's behavioral in addition, I'll just interrupt you. That is inside the, the classroom, the general education classroom. So that's something I've observed.
Yeah.
As a parent.
Yeah.
Um, and so just, I'm, I'm wondering about that lens.
Yeah, I think the, the key word to that is over-reliance on pulling kids out of the general education classroom. So based off of the intensity of need, that's our continuum of services. So if we're talking about a high level of need, whether it's instruction, whether it is uh behavior, whether it's um whether it, so whatever lack of skill, so that's what we have to be, we have to really be, uh, use our clinical lenses to make that determination and not over-rely on that. Have a continuum of services. So knowing really what, what, what would work best for a child. And our, that's a cha- a challenge for our teams, our special education teams, to make that determination. But we have to build that out so that there is an understanding in on, here's what, here, here are our choices. Here's what the data is saying out of the diagnostics that are telling us. And then we make a decision as a team.
Right, and just, just, and I won't stand this, but that's more than just for the special education team. That's also for the, you know, the teeth of the general education teacher who's running a classroom, right? And how disruptive or not.
Right.
You know, this is. So it's, it's like, it's such a big team effort, obviously.
Yeah. So we can't have services in isolation and expect generalization. Right? So even if, when we pull kids out, like pulling kids out, right? So there, there needs to be a clinical reason why we're doing that, and there should be a clinical reason why we're bringing them back.
Right.
And so that should go through team process. But all, but really, before that, it's program design on that continuum of services so that everybody knows what everybody, what everybody's role is.
I'm sorry, push back a little bit, or not, or, or quiet a little bit more with what, um, that topic. So, ah, when you say we're very reliant on taking kids out of the class, um, how reliant? Like, how would you define that a little bit more?
Yeah, so a lot of the, a lot of the, um, so a lot of our schools have um are relying on having small groups.
Right.
And doing small groups, it's reactionary.
Yep.
It's pulling kids out after instruction. Now, if it's reading decoding, that makes sense. It's, if it's specialized reading decoding, that's hard to, to be able to um co-deliver in the general education classroom. If it's that, it's different because you're talking about sounding out language and letters or sound or um blends. So, so that can be challenging, right, to have that in the general ed. But um other things like executive functioning, other things like reading comprehension, language comprehension, listening comprehension, like, that can all be provided in the general ed setting, provided that we have the appropriate supports. And that's largely what.
And when the student is removed, you said there's a loss of learning. Elaborate on that. For my concerns, I, I understand there could be frustration keeping the student in the class. We are learning now that there's a different path to that. But what is it they're losing? Say more about that.
Yeah, imagine a, imagine a scenario where uh, we're pulling a child out for um listening comprehension, language comprehension, or reading comprehension. They're all similar, right? I would argue, um, reading and language comprehension are the same. Listening's a little bit different. So, so if we are relying to pull a child out for sessions and learning how to do that, they're missing science and social studies, or they're missing core instruction out of math, or they're missing other parts of ELA. So, so.
Because the, with the person that's working with them one-on-one isn't doing, they're focusing on a small area.
Or small group, yes. And not only that, it's reactionary. So how is that person going to um definitely attach or, or use the curriculum real time?
Right.
It's a lot of moving parts in with that. It's nobody's fault. It's just a model.
Well, then, when the child returned, they're already behind and frustrated because they lost out on that learning and
Something else.
Regardless of what happened with that. Regardless of what happened with that session, they're already behind going back in, but you just caused your children problems. I never thought of that, that's helpful, you know?
Yeah. Yes.
So I'm a general ed teacher, I've coached teachers for years. We have the inclusion model in. Uh, is there any data on where the kids are going out of district? Are they going to inclusion model schools? Uh, are they going, you know, or, um, like, is that something that parents know about maybe during an IEP meeting or just general, um, education for the parent? Uh, and then they say, oh, here's an inclusion model, your, your student will be in a general ed class for English, but because of IEP, they'll, you know, they'll have a co-teacher. Is there any data on that or?
So as far as data and reasons why kids are out of replacements, lack of an inclusion problem, uh, model? So, so generally speaking, it would, it would go from inclusion model to our inclusion opportunity for a child and then go to a district program. So then i- if that wasn't robust enough effective progress, then the child would be placed out of district. So that would, but if you don't have a strong inclusion model, guess what happens to your district programs? You're overrun, you're overfilled, there's inherent value for each one of those seats because of that. So it's really important to have strong program across the board. So trickle-down, yes, but directly, probably not so much for inclusion.
And, and how, uh, how, I, I don't have the data, uh, mind, but around us, how many school districts have the inclusion model, uh, just on the North Shore?
Yeah, so, um, so I was here, um, in early two thousands.
I am.
Yeah. And, um, so there was co-teaching at, at the high school. So, um, it's been in existence here. Um, it's been known, um, you know, nineties, it was really in the nineties, it became, um, more known and spread from there. As far as other districts that employ that, I think they, I think they do that to, to some extent because the mandate is to have a continuum of services. So to some degree, and to what degree, I'm not exactly sure. So, yeah, sure.
You talked about duplicate services or programs. So in your past experience, how have families reacted to, is that, in my, or my hearing is that sometimes not every school will be having, you know, should have the, the same program if the enrollment is low, right? Like, you kind of want to get that skill and do the program really well in one or two places, not multiple.
Right.
Right? Um, and how, you know, do families, are they open to kind of the benefit of the strength of the program versus the location of the school?
Yeah, that's always a challenge at the elementary level. Nobody wants to move a child, right? It's, it's, that's not, like, those should be really, really, um, measured and well-known, um, decisions and proposals. So, so, because that brings in a challenge and in, in for challenges for families with multiple kids and that, right? So it's, um, that's, but what's most important is, is that, is for kids, why it's really important to have an inclusion program that's really strong, so that is less of reliance on district programs. But the district program should have a specialization part to them, right? Because it's, if, if we all, if there's a focus in the same program in each building, then we're not, we're gonna, we're gonna be building out more and more programs and it's, we'll be outweighing the general ed program and really should be value-added, not replacing. But it's important to have that specialization for sure. Gives an opportunity for kids to be in their home community, hopefully.
Taking a break in the middle here, I, I just have a question, if you have any quick answer, but, um, have you noticed or seen in literature, academic journals about any sustained effects of the pandemic on speech pathologies or language learning and anything pop up in our district in particular?
So not, nothing peer reviewed in on that topic. I, um, it's still early going, but I, I would get, I would guess that it's related to that spike. So what I predicted, um, in my years at Penn Tuckett, um, after, during and, and, um, something after the pandemic, I anticipated about pre-K because of lack of exposure, right? So our diagnostics would, would, doesn't counter that lack of exposure. So it comes up as a, a deficit, whether that's disability or lack of exposure, one or the other, I'm not, I'm not sure, right? So you find eligibility and in three years' time, you'll have this bubble of eligibility and then you'll have a bubble of discharge. And so I would anticipate that kind of thing to happen here as well. So that'll be interesting to see. So anecdotally or just observation and qualitatively, quantitatively, locally, both districts, that's what I, I haven't looked at any peer reviewed. That would be interesting.
Yeah, because I remember we, we saw a spike in, in a certain, um, I think it was autism and language, uh, specific week, or speech pathologies, this was a while back, years ago. And I was wondering how that has progressed in years and did keep up on it like I expected to on the question.
Yeah, yeah, it's definitely a bubble right now.
Yeah.
Of, of, of high needs at the preschool level, like, we, we have, we're opening new classrooms because of that. And, and then finding kids eligible and they, I mean, they're, they're needing the services, sure. Yeah.
Is this happening in other districts too, do you think? Like, do you keep in touch with the, the?
As far as other districts where that's happening?
Yeah, like, are there districts seeing a bubble in preschool right now?
Yeah.
Like, so it's not.
I saw it there.
You saw it there.
Yeah, yeah, so it's pandemic-related, I think, but also, I, I, I don't know that it's one hundred percent just pandemic.
Right.
I just think it's definitely.
But it's not just foster.
It's not just foster, no, no, I'm hearing.
Like, lack of staff, it's not just foster.
Sorry.
Lack of staff, you know, I'm trying to get the specialists that we advertise and.
That's a challenge, a shortage.
Right.
Yeah, shortages.
Which is unfortunate.
Right, it's not good for anybody, but it's, it's the reality of, of some of those, yeah.
Yes.
Yep. Um, so that third gap, the third lens is the gap and the gaps in programming, so vertically and horizontally. Uh, what I found is that, um, that we need to expand our social emotional programming. We need to strengthen our programming, supporting students with autism. We need to expand our language-based program and expand the sub-separate programming for kids with global needs. At the elementary and middle school level.
Can you say the last one again?
Um, some separate programming for kids with, students with global needs. So global needs would be intellectual impairment, um, or, or borderline.
Global is a word for like generalized?
Yeah, like, like, just, so a number of issues with intellectual impairment, it's, it could impact reading, writing, math. So in a global way, yeah. All areas, yeah. Right, so, um, so, so with all that said, so I'm, I'm, I'm here to say that I'm, I'm recommending a, a shift. No shocker there, right? After we just said, right? So, um, we've got to flip the script here on this. And what I mean by that is that we've got, instead of our district program, so here, so here's an anecdote with this. Some of our district programs are, um, have district staff, teachers that are flexing into the general ed setting. Are some of our grade-level, um, special education teachers pulling kids up, or a lot of them. Do you see how backwards that is? It's backwards. We have to flip them. Exactly right. We have, our grade-level special education teachers should be in the general education setting and our sub-separate, our district programs should be in a sub-separate setting. Not to minimize opportunity for kids, just the opposite, to maximize opportunities for kids. Because the whole point of district programs is to get intensive services and flex into a place where they have services and co-teaching does that. So we've got to flip this script. So, um, so there, there's going to be, uh, I'm recommending that kind of shift where the services go to the ki- children and not the child, child go to the services unless it's intensive needs. Right, so that continuum of services comes into play here, right? So it's not all or nothing, it's a blend, it's a meaningful blend. Child has an emotional regulation, uh, issue as, as part of the disability. So it's not just staying inclusion, it could be a blend, right? Let's do that in a meaningful way.
Same with the blend, give me an example of what.
Blend, so, um, so it could be another word, hybrid, right? So blend, both sub-separate and inclusion in a meaningful way so that it's, so a child's able to learn generalized skills because we can't have services in isolation and expect generalization. So there needs to be support there on the general ed for that. But there also has to be a need of our, our, um, a measured readiness for a child that has, is developing skills, burgeoning skills, whether it's emotional regulation, whether it's executive functioning, whether it's, um, um, language acquisition or whatever the issue is, we need to have, um, a, a design and continuum to offer both sub-separate and inclusion.
So to that point, what is this vision? So you say in co-teaching, right? And I believe we were doing co-teaching at one of his veteran school in the fifth grade, if I remember correctly, years back, um, which seems to describe exactly what he's talking about. Are you saying hire more teachers to be part of that model? Or use our current staff in a different way, like, what is that?
Use our staff in a different way, and I'm going to unpack that.
Okay.
So it, it'll make sense. I'll use the word level funding. It's a funny word, it's something else they love to hear. So budget neutral level funding is, is more, budget neutral. So, um, that's part of this.
Okay, thank you.
No, it's all good. So, um, okay, so flipping script, so our special education teachers would be, um, more involved with co-teaching. And, um, so the design really would be, so at the elementary level, there'd be a focus in on, um, really across the board, not just elementary. There'd be a focus on, on ELA and there'd be a focus on math. And the idea, if you focus in on those subject areas, there would also be a paraprofessional that would be opposite, um, in the opposite classroom that would mirror the, those, those services and maybe switch. Capacity building, right, consultation there, and then there'd be capacity building. So you have two classrooms per grade level with that model with co-teaching available. So in one week, the special education teacher would be in one classroom, third grade ELA, and then the other ELA classroom, third grade, uh, for three days, the other one would be for two. And the paraprofessional will help switch. So.
One para?
Yeah, sure.
One para for two, the two classes?
So there'd be, it would be one para per, per grade level. Per grade that model. And there'd be one special education teacher for two grade levels, doing it this way, for most of our schools.
One special for two grade levels, did you say?
Yeah.
So. So our paraprofessionals, for the most part, are not trained special education teachers.
Right.
Right. So how, how is that happening? I mean, you've got a special education teacher who's trained and certified and all of that. And our paraprofessionals do amazing work, but they're not trained and certified in that way.
Right.
We have some, some separate programming.
Yeah.
But in general.
Yep.
Correct me if I'm wrong. So how are they?
Through consultation and professional development. And there would be a focus to this, right? There'd be a focus in on this with language comprehension, bringing that to life, right? As it's attached to the curriculum, right? There'd be strategies there, both for the general education teacher and the opposite classroom, the paraprofessional, just the same, right? So, like, there's education too, with the consultation, that's part of an inclusion. So if a child needs extra help, then the paraprofessional could insert themselves. So, so with this way, this would be a budget neutral way of doing this to start. So if we went in with full classrooms, full co-teachers all day long, like, we'd have to, we'd, it'd be a, it'd be a budget, like, we'd have to rethink everything we're doing. The way I'm doing it is with measured and focused intent on this, to get the most out of really the resources we have, currently have, and improve the outcomes within that model. This is not a model I'm not, this is a model I'm very experienced with.
Is what they did at Penn Tuckett?
Penn Tuckett, yes. I instituted this there, yes. So, um, so. Yes, so district programs, um, so what we need to do is offer full sub-separate options, which could be blended, there's that word. What I mean by that is kids that are in district program can also flex into the general ed. Never take that opportunity away from kids. Just because we would say you're eligible for a district program, that doesn't mean that prohibits you from accessing the general ed. We want to do that in a meaningful way. So it's possible to span between the two. And in fact, I would hope that would do that. Uh, but it, they need to have the full capacity of a full sub-separate. So when you have kids that have emotional regulation issues and, um, so as you mentioned, um, a classroom that is constantly being disrupted because it's not the readiness level, it's hard to have an inclusion program, even that, to make that work. So I get that, right? So then that's when we look at a sub-separate program, full capacity, sub-separate program, to teach those skills of emotional regulation. And when it's, when that readiness level, then we start to flex in the general ed setting. So we need to do that with our social emotional program, our language-based program, and our sub-separate program for global.
I'm, I can ask mine at the end, I have so many questions.
I'm just reacting that you're gonna, you're gonna be in a lot of places to kind of monitor and assist and whether it's through kind of setting it up in the right way, but also.
Yeah.
Checking in.
There's a lot of moving parts, but it isn't as daunting as you. It really isn't. So this work has already begun in the way of teaching, um, um, our leaders are not teaching, they, they had foundational knowledge of this. But really have a focus on the design of this. And so, so I've begun this work so that we have, um, a fuller understanding of what we're gonna, what we're gonna do moving forward to have a continuum of services and a robust inclusion program. Um, and then what will follow up is, um, professional development so that our staff know what the models are, the high-leverage models and, and making this work, both academically, um, and, um, socially, emotionally, for the whole child, executive function, all the same. So.
I just, the social emotional needs program, is that, uh, bringing, uh, using counselors and therapists or?
Yeah, great point. So there will be a clinical design to that, that will be key to be part of that. Key means being part of that. So it, um, having them as part of the clinical team, that being just counselors, um, psychologists, speech pathologists, social pregmacs come out of there that can be played with social emotional dysregulation. So there could be, uh, there will be a range of those providers that would be part of general, um, special education practitioner that will be, um, that will be part of this program, as well as paraprofessionals, just the same. Okay, yeah, yeah.
So you can hear that I'm coming from a certain experience. So for instance, in a school that my family's been part of, there have been a few children who have been so dysregulated that it disrupted the entire building.
Yeah.
With learning in place.
Yeah.
Multiple times in a school year. My understanding, just, so, right, this is an extreme level. My understanding is that one issue was that there was no space to put this child in another program and also that the parents did not agree to take the child out of the school. So. I guess I come to it from that, what, having observed that myself and how disruptive that can be, both to the rest of the staff and the rest of the students in a building. Um, so what you're saying, and just please correct me if I'm wrong, is like, a student in that who's having those behavioral issues, obviously would need to be probably in a sub-separate at the very least, depending on what the reason for the issues. Yeah, right, and I don't know any of that. Um, but then I guess the question is, you had said that if they're out, you're not getting the same learning if they're in their sub-separate.
Well, not exactly. So what, what I'm saying is that it's, so it's, when we're saying a full sub-separate, we're replacing.
Okay, so that would have its own.
So, yes, and what we're also saying is that there'd be a value, a set of evaluations that are formed team to make that kind of decision. What we're saying is, is that the therapy that's associated with clinical design of the program would be paramount over the general ed setting at this point.
Right.
The idea is to teach those skills and strategies so that, um, kids can get back to the general ed setting.
Okay, but if, okay, I don't have to ask more specifics, but yes, it's challenged.
It's challenging, and the other part is sometimes you have to just say that the readiness might not be level, might be, not, might not be there for the district program, and that's when you look at and how to replace it.
But parents still have to agree that it's ready.
They do, they do, parents, parents are the boss.
Right.
That's right.
So.
They're the boss.
Right.
Teach a buy-in to all this.
Yeah.
Have you tested that anywhere on the? Have you tested that anywhere on the district?
Yeah, so that's so important.
It is. It's not gonna, that's the success.
And so what I like to say, yeah, this isn't the Mike Javer Show, now hear this, right? Let's do what I say. This is all about presenting out the data to, to the staff, through my clinical meetings, that, so it's the to and fro. I hear what their needs are. And then we look at the student population, what is it telling us? What is that telling us district wide? So some buildings, um, they won't know that other, they won't have access to that other data. So I provide that. What do, what do I need by data? Student profiles and what those needs are. So I share that out and I, and so so there's greater understanding to that. That, it has to be at the forefront of that. And that's where the buy-in notice. And if that's like not of interest, then there, that could be another job that somebody's interested in doing. Another part of the district, this whole strategic program. And I always want to put people in a position of high leverage where they want to be.
Right.
Yes.
That's how it works. And this was successful process we've been working for.
Yeah, yeah, without a doubt. Yeah, it takes, these are unique positions, district programs, these are unique positions. So, so it's like, very innovative. So it takes on that entrepreneurial, educational entrepreneurial kind of spirit that somebody has and they make it their own a lot of ways. So it's a unique person and it's, it's, they find their niche and like they, they fall in love with it, just been my experience.
And when you say policy changes, do you mean policy changes at this level or administrative policies?
I say policies.
I thought I heard the beginning. I thought you said in the beginning, there could be some policy changes or maybe it was just program changes.
Program, procedures, um, yeah, no policies.
So that's done.
Yeah, yeah, procedures and programs, yeah, clinical design and um, participation. So lastly, um, I got out of this and, and so, um, I won't spit out data in on this, but um, so I'll just give you the anecdote. So as with the, with our program, I guess, it's a little bit of data. So soft. And that is foundations. That's our decoding program. It's well known, most districts do it. So even with that program, which is a Wilson-based program, which is a specialized reading program. Even with that program, it is expected to have twenty percent of our population that will require more services after going through that whole program, even with intervention, twenty percent. Much like any other district, it's not different. So, um, so now you're talking about eligibility for uh, the Arizona Specialized Methodology. So Wilson Reading or Gillingham and Lyndon Woodbell, that's for sure. Those are the, um, those are the high leverage, uh, reading interventions. As we know, science of readings and that, that's very, very new. So the, the, for the full fidelity of that reading service, it's an hour, forty-five minutes to an hour session. If we use our current infrastructure, what we have for availability for our staff and their availability is that five times thirty, thirty minutes a session. So we're perpetuating a problem here with kids and learning how to read because we're not really implementing the falsibility of a program. So the solution to that is, is finding ways, budget neutrals best we can.
This could be a problem.
This one could be.
This one could be a problem.
But I, I don't know to the fullest extent.
Expectation.
Yes.
Well, we are in kind of a budget development conversation because you, you're presenting us now.
Yeah, this, this could be a potential.
It's a special education reading specialist. What I mean by that is a special education license certification. So you can get onto the service delivery. Talking about kids who will be eligible for Wilson OG or Gillingham or Lyndon Woodbell. And they would, um, uh, they would be the provider per building. Some buildings, some buildings, um, already have, Plum Cove already have a range of people that have the certification. And so it could be a team approach there. I'm impartial to that. What I'm saying is that, um, for other buildings, it's really powerful to have one specialist or one and a half specialists, that's when you work at a larger school. Because of the, of availability, uh, the training, if I, if I, if we train a multitude of staff members and they leave, how are you gonna fill that hole? See that problem? So if you have one that you've had good feeling that they're gonna, they're here to stay, you invest in that person and they become resident expert for reading. And um, evaluations and for um, uh, COVID.
And are you saying per building, per elementary school building?
Yeah, it'd be nuanced at Plum Cove because you're thinking it's a smaller building. So that would be like a reading specialist, backslash, um, inclusion teacher or teacher. Or, or that might be done by committee, by, by a range of staff members because they already have that there and I think they're well entrenched. And there's not a lot of training that has, the district has to invest in to get to that.
Right, but Beaman, East Vets and West Parish would all need.
And, yeah, some of them, some of them have them, but some licensure is in question. So that'd be my recommendation. The reading license, the special, the reading license is a general education, although very valuable. It, as far as the service delivery, it's, it requires a special education license to get onto that service.
Do these people exist?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah. And so in the past, um, I've used, um, a special education grant to train staff up. So that's for that.
We were currently training through a grant from last year, uh, the H Q R I M grant. Um, I think there's eight teachers that are being trained in Wilson Level One. Um, we have about twenty that are being trained in letters, which is not quite what you've mentioned, but it is, it talks about the science of reading. So we have a lot of very capable staff members that are eager to be trained. Um, and we support them. You know, I, since, since there's been talk of this, I've had a few that reached out saying like, remember me when the training comes up? Um, they're really excited to do that. So yes, we, they're out there. And yes, some of them are already in our schools eager to.
And it's our interest.
Yes.
And what's their title? Like what's the, what do you, what do we call them? Reading specialists?
Yeah, yeah, special education reading specialists. Yeah.
But yes, they, they're not necessarily new hires, that they exist within the district and with some.
Well, it would be, so, it would be some, um, conversion
Okay.
of, of staff. And so we don't have a clear depiction in on, on how that conversion would look.
Yeah.
So it's, so.
It might be a version of, there's a new staff member, or there's a current staff member that goes into the space and we have to backfill.
Right.
It might be a version that we can move a staff member and there's not a need. And that's gonna be school dependent. And that's part of the budget process. We're going through that. So we'll have a better understanding when we come with our exact stats, I think in March.
March.
So, you know, we'll have the understanding how much of a ask it will be. Um, but obviously we're trying to do it as class neutral as we can.
Yeah.
Um, but also it's thoroughly a need.
So, just one question, another question. So by implementing this type of, um, and with this need, is this, is this approach? Wouldn't it be equitable to be able to do it fully or not do it at all? Or do you see a way to manage some hiccups that you might not get all the staff you need to implement this type of, um, education right away?
So, so I think what I'm hearing you ask is, would we start with our two schools? So that's possible, right? So I mean, it's possible, it, right? It, it just, what the current demand is at twenty percent?
We know every school. Yeah. I'm just thinking, would the approach be all or nothing or would you go with what you have? Exactly. You know, with hiring.
We think three, nothing's not.
I think that's the, yeah, yeah. Remaining static on this issue is, 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 I don't, is a, is an answer. I think we have to be creative with this, given, um, constraints as best we can. Um, so when we're talking about, um, conversion, that means that we'd be converting either, um, a reading specialist or a special education teacher, um, and, and so that has to come from somewhere.
Yeah.
So, so right, that's, that's, so we have a need there too. So like, so either way, I have to hire for that.
So that's part of, so all the, the priority presentations that you've had, the B N F and Scott. What we're doing between now and when we present the budget in March is we are prioritizing among the district of where highest leads are. And we, we don't have that list yet. We, we've already started working on it and we have ideas. I don't wanna go ahead and share what we haven't settled yet, but we'll come to you with what those priorities are and, um, how we can do it in a measured way to add or we're ready to go all in. Like we'll know that.
And no, my only concern is just hiring, right? Hiring is a problem everywhere. And I'm just, this sounds great. You wanna do it. It, it can be presented to the budget, we can approve it, but guess what? There's no one applying to fill the positions that this creates or changes. So that's, that's where my, my concern is, nowhere else.
Yeah, and my, let me just jump on that. And I, my concern is we've taken a long time to sort of even out curriculum and sort of make our, make equity at our elementary schools of known priority. And it's not always been that way. And we think we're just achieving it. And I'm really committed to keeping what our students are learning at each of our schools as a goal.
Which is why I said, why I'm.
I really, I really, I, I'm, we are, we are also committed to that. Really a big deal.
Could there be reading specialists that travel from schools until we have a full hire, you know?
The demand is so great. So like, so right now, like, so we have, we have reading specialists that are doing this job right now. So that was my example in the way of, of, they're only available for thirty minutes a day. And it's because they have other responsibilities and they can't give the falsibility of something. So we're not doing right by kids. We should be accelerating learning, not giving them a portion of that because by the time they get to a male, they're still working this out and that's something that we need to be aggressive with. Yeah.
Very.
Yeah. All right, that's my last.
Mike, yeah. But you did say that there's people within the district right now that could be trained up to kind of.
Yeah, I've got money for it. I've got, um, I've got the special education improvement grant. Um, so that's, that's ready to go for, for targeting this kind of thing.
Okay, excellent. Um, I wrote down three things. One, um, I can't even read my own writing. Uh, first, it, it sounds like there's kind of a, a, a quantum shift here in the way we can deliver special education. There's a shift in it. You've presented something to us tonight that's maybe certainly different. That kind of says to me, well, I have to trust, and I do trust what you're presenting. Like, hey, this is the model that I think would be successful. And I think that it's an emotionally charged issue, especially for parents, for kids that are have, you know, special education needs and for staff too, you know, for people that work with it, that have learning disabilities. So. I think that's the biggest takeaway for me is, all sounds good. I like this, you know, I, I really like the way you've presented it tonight. And at some point I had to say, well, gotta trust this and see if we can make this work and see if we can make it work across the district. And I think the other thing is, I think it's, I think it's okay to say as someone that's, that, that has had a child that got special services, a special ed student, it's okay to say, hey, let's set the bar a little bit higher. Let's not just give this kids this that are involved in special ed, just enough so we can get them out of class to high school. Let's, let's set the bar, bar high and say, let's go above and beyond. And that usually involves money. So I think as we develop the budget, it really needs to be a priority for us to kind of say, hey, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna make good on this. And we're gonna try to make good on it and do everything we can to kind of facilitate that. So. I appreciate the presentation. I, I certainly trust what you have to say. And I think it's, it's okay for us to say, we're gonna do, we're gonna do right by the kids that need these services.
Nothing I'll say with that. Um, I don't have this data in front of me right now, but I can tell you that the student growth percentages at, at Penn State while I was there led to state, you know, and it's because of the inclusion program.
Good to hear.
And, and you know, I'll go back to previous special education programs or the presentations we've had. You know, the bottom line takeaway often is the approach to teaching students with needs helps, helps all, having teachers know that helps all students accelerate at higher levels. So, um, you know, and I love the idea of if students needs more support and skills so that they, that, that they're focused on that before they then get thrown into a situation where they can't be successful.
Yeah. Right, so district programs, just delve into this one. I'm almost done, so it's, thank you for the patience. Um, so.
You can tell we're interested.
Yeah, I love it. This is great.
It's, it's very important.
It makes, it makes me smile. So, um, so I wanna make sure our, our district programs go through a rigorous clinical process. You heard me say that a bunch of times. You know what that means as far as clinical teams, related services with practitioners, all working together to really depict what we're trying to do with our population of kids that would be eligible for a program. So we would outline values of the program. What do we value in the program? We try and get kids into the inclusion setting. Are we trying to, um, build capacity, um, and resilience and skills, if you will? So what are the values of the program? I want our staff to really feel that and take ownership of that. I wanna have a program description in general. I wanna have a, a range of methodologies that are outlined there. And I wanna have, really most importantly, is entrance and exit criteria, right? It shouldn't be a forever thing that a child's in a program in a hybrid way or a full way. There should be a, a, a known understanding of, here are the elements that we're looking for the program for entrance and discharge. And with that, um, so as, as we discussed, that, that the population changes and we need to remain dynamic with this. So this is, this annual process, this from, I call it the district promo process, will happen annually. We'll, we'll do this annual, look at our population at large and as it impacts our programs, our programs will need to adapt to really what that data, those data points are telling us. It's how we remain adaptive as a program and responsive to our students and parents. And it's, it's how we, um, create a better opportunities for kids and improve student outcomes. And adaptation. So roll out, you know, so to be clear in on this, um, well, some pressure development that's already started, high school, no teaching that exists. And we're working with our program leaders to make sure that there's foundational understanding of really what inclusion is and what our district programs will be. The, uh, the, the clinical teams at each building will be doing this work and building methodologies and, um, and values and program descriptions and, um, seeing where our weaknesses are, where our strengths are. And making sure that we have the, you know, those program descriptions. Um, the focus for co-teaching will be at the, recommending at the earlier grades. So this doesn't have to be all at once, right? Because that means we have to change I E Ps that currently exist. As I said, largely, most of them, most of them say, um, small groups, sub separate for, um, skill-based instruction. Kids are pulled out of general ed setting. So that's gonna take some time, um, to, to, uh, work with parents and, and work with them about a, a new delivery model of the services go to the child attached to the curriculum. Um, there'll be a range of strategies that will be, uh, rolling forward with that. And we would start at the younger grades. So K one and perhaps even flex to two, um, in year one. Right? It's really gonna depend in on what the, um, the parents, um, um, that will change. A delivery from small group, eligible with that, and then move towards a, an inclusion model. And it could be a blend of both, inclusion and sub separate. It could very well be. So we will have that option for parents. So it won't just be all or nothing. And the main part is, is how do we know, um, your child's making progress with any model? Like we can micro-progress and, uh, like micro-progress report on this. We don't have to wait for the report card and the coinciding special ed progress note. We can do that much sooner. Strategy in on working with parents with the new delivery, uh, is really micro-progress monitoring. So we'd be working with building, I'd be working with building principals, um, in central office for that matter. We'll be working with building principals to make sure that we have a, a schedule per building that, that will waterfall and will, uh, enable, um, our staff at K one, perhaps two to leverage themselves to do the E L A and the math. So the schedule has to be available to that, um, opportunity, um, for our students. So that will be work that we do moving forward. We'll have professional development that I'll be providing. I wrote my dissertation on co-teaching. I hope you can tell. Um, so it's important. And, um, so I'll be providing that professional development, uh, moving forward. And, um, I'll have, um, so the increased, the, the capacity of our reading specialist for instruction, that's an important part. I'm recommending doing that in real time, in real time for, for the next fiscal year. Um, we'll try to tease out what the cost and what strategies we can, um, employ to make it as close to budget neutral. There are some strategies that are out there for that. I won't unpack all those now, but there are. And then, um, aim for level funding by conversion of staff, uh, and changing roles of staff. So, um, I don't have all those answers in on that, but that's what I've been looking for, right? Always well-built capacity. What's our data telling us? How do we lever? How do we leverage staff to change their roles with role, with, with our staff, if they want to do it? And, and put them in a position of success for, improve student outcomes for our kids. So that will be part of the work we have moving forward. So we can start with the co-teaching process. That would be that budget neutral, by spelling it out as I did, we would roll that out by, by each year with a range of strategies. So what we, by grade level, I hope is that we have a turnaround within two, three years. It's fully the elementary level in particular, fully inclusion as a, as an opportunity for our students.
Is that where you would start the elementary level?
Yes, yeah. But also strategize too, at, at, at O'Malley and during high school. So, so we would, it would be a whole range of strategies, you know, informing parents of what this option is, what does that mean? What does that look like? How do I know my child's making progress there?
We do have some co-teaching at O'Malley by staffing, but the professional development and support and strengthening, the strengthening of that program would be what the work we would do there. So that's not a cost. That's a, that's a support from.
We had the staff to start in this. And, and, and I think moving forward, I think some buildings, many of our elementary buildings, well, even if we had full conversion of, of the pullout, small groups to inclusion, I think that we would currently be staffed for it.
Did you look at any work? Sorry, I'm asking questions about, about preschool and kindergarten.
What, one more time?
Do you see any changes for the preschool and kindergarten, especially since we have this bubble coming in?
So, yeah, so that's adaptive on its own. So the beauty, so the preschool program is a, an inclusion program by design.
Design, yeah.
And so what we do with the population that we, that we have, we, we make decisions on building cohorts of kids, intensive needs for autism, students with autism and, and other areas of disability. So, so we do that, that kind of planning. It's already there as far as the percentage. It's, it's fifty fifty as far as non-disabled kids and kids who went through disabilities receiving special.
And then what about kindergarten?
So that's, that's, that's going to be our, our ongoing question in on where are resources and how do we use them?
Yeah.
I think, and talking through kids that are in district programs that we have and how to use some resources there and a range of sub separate and inclusion to help with that bubble of students as far as numbers and depth of need. So there's, there are a range of strategies in that and still have current acquisition of professionals that can be worked, so trained.
Thank you. Very impressive. We wait for this.
Oh, good, good, good.
Seven and a half months. You've been working very hard.
It's been great. The staff's been great. It's not just me working hard. It's, it's like we are working collectively and it's been a pleasure.
Oh, sure.
Thanks. I've been very quiet over here. It's, it's not because of disinterest.
I look at you every time it says cost.
I thought, I, I. I was going to comment on the cost of it. No, I, I didn't have to ask a lot of questions because my colleagues asked a lot of great questions, but this is very interesting, very encouraging. And I think that the part that's most encouraging is the renewal process, you know, because it can't just be, well, this is the way you do things. And it, it can't be a five year plan. It's like, it's an every year plan. We have to make sure things are going the way they're supposed to and then adjust as necessary because it's a different group of kids coming out every year. So thank you for the, the work. I'm looking forward to implementing it and.
Cost, which was a plus. Very good. Thank you.
I think you said cost of it for one year.
To start. So, Mike.
Year one, really.
So what kind of tools do you have that would make your job of reassessing annually the renewal process? What, are there tools that you, you have or need to make that process? I mean, it sounds like a big project every year.
It, it's dialogue. So the work's never done.
Yeah.
The work is never done. And, and that's what makes it exciting, really, right? It, it, so it, we all, we all have to be in, in the realm of education and just special education adaptive. And, and so I think it's my approach to, to build structures of communication with staff, with parents. That's what survey I mentioned. These data points are so important and it's really important for us to, to remain adaptive to what our population is telling us. So I think it's the structures that, that I have is I use for tools and, and, and the communication underneath that.
Yeah, so I mean, I'm just wondering, like, you, you mentioned data. Is there, is there like, like one, one place where you collect data from different inputs? You know, to say, okay, well, this is, you know, here I produced a graph and here are the changes in, in, in this issue over time. You mentioned earlier in the presentation that you were looking for the most need, like the, by population of students. Have you just, am I asking too many questions at once? But have you discovered what, what that larger issue is that we need to address as far as like single issue problems that like students have that are most prevalent?
Yeah, so I think, I think the best way I can answer this is, so by experience, I, I kind of know what to ask.
Yeah.
And so knowing what to ask, I can really get, I can get pointed to the direction that's going to be fruitful for where I need to find the leverage for. So I, I think, I think that's, I, I try to strategize that, right? Because it's just a lot of information, as you just mentioned, a lot of data points that need to be lost there. So I, I think it's, it's, it's not a lot of questions to ask and, and, and then, and then using those structures of communication to have that dial, dialogue that keeps going and make it about the kids. It's okay to have differences. We make it about kids. It's always going to end up in a good place.
Yeah. Yeah, I guess while, while having your attention. So, you know, I guess my, you know, I, let me just say, I appreciate you coming to the district and all that. And, and, and the out of the box is what I've been looking for, like, you know, as far as a change in, in, you know, the status quo of what we've been doing so far. So I appreciate the fresh look and the out of, out of the box thing. But I guess I, you know, on one hand, I, I feel like our, our, our most high need students are, are, are like dear to my heart, honestly. And I, I, I do want to pull them up. I want to pull them into the district as much as I can to return them to their, to their, you know, community. Because I feel like they're missing out on a lot being out of district. But, you know, as far as inclusion goes, it, it feels to me like there needs to be a balancing act here, right? Like you say, like, you know, whether they test in, test out, however you put that. But then there's the other side of the coin where we have the most high achieving and most capable students that I just wonder, you know, will there be disruptions in the classroom for those students?
Yeah. So it's, I think it's, so students first, right? Students first. It's all of our students, right? So we, so it's, so if a child that is like, say, so social emotional regulation, dysregulation, it's not fair for that child or other children, right? The child that's experiencing it, right, is, could be embarrassing themselves in front of other kids, right? So we wouldn't want to be putting kids in a position that's not good for kids. So it's kids first, right? And so that's why we have to do this in measured ways and use tools to help us get to that and include evaluations, include observations, and then make our best judgments in on that. And so at the same time, we're, we're not in this to just to say, oh, you're, you're a program kid and you don't deserve this, this or that. Well, you, you might be in, a child might receive services in a program, but there's that point of readiness that that's where they're at. And what we need to do is build skills and strategies so that they can take elements of this. I'll, I'll just say really, really quickly. So one of my favorite stories of my experience, and it's a true one, this happened about, I don't know, eight years ago at Penn Tucket, I was there for twelve. And I was at my district meeting and, and the parent's a teacher and, and live in public schools. And, and her son was spent more time under the desk, throwing the desk or throwing a chair or lashing out at other kids and it wasn't going well. After the meeting, we talked, mom and myself, we spoke and said, we need a change. So intellect, all the evaluations, child had autism, high intellect just doesn't have that regulation down yet. So he also wasn't, the design of the program wasn't very good. It wasn't the consortium, consortium is a great program. It was another collaborative. And so, so I, I happen to be building a, a new program that had a cohort of kids. And I talked to the mom about it and I said, I have this opportunity for the child. And so she said, are you sure, Mike? I said, no. I said, yes, let's take a measured, let's take a measured approach to this. He was flipping chairs, like, I think he said everywhere in the book and like he wasn't a happy, in a happy place. He wasn't being challenged too. I knew that, but he needed to be challenged and he wasn't in a good environment clinically. Long story short, getting to the program, by two years discharged from the program, by three years discharged from special education services, just got his engineering degree, a new master's level. This child didn't have that opportunity from an out of district placement, albeit with that kind of profile presentation, he would not have been on that trajectory. So that all goes to that child. We just provided the opportunity. That child did the work and it was spectacular to see. So it's possible. I'm not saying they all end like that. That's my favorite story. It's true. I can't give you a name, but it's, it's, it's a possibility.
Thank you for your video.
Yeah, thank you.
Some of the smartest, smartest individuals have, have such like, like social problems, issues like, I can, I can totally see that.
Yeah.
Like, it's not about their capacity to learn. It's about their, you know, the compounding problem.
That's right.
Thank you. Thank you for answering the question.
Yes, yeah, that's great. Love the details. Thank you for.
It's great. And thank you for your work over the last seven and a half months that came to a new approach going forward.
It's my pleasure and it's been hard to do it.
Okay. Great. You don't have to stay.
Right. We can learn about it.
Yeah, you can. Thank you very much.
I can visit soon.
Well, yeah, sure.
Okay. Next item of business is subcommittee reports. And we have the building and finance meetings of February fourth, sixth and twelfth, two thousand twenty five by Chairperson Vanessa Serfence. So this is three meetings with a lot of information and I'm going to highly recommend everybody watch for Zoom meetings because there, it's, it would be absolutely impossible for me to give a completely pour as to everything that was said, discussed, learned, presented. But I can tell you, it was a really great process this year. Tonight is our final one. We had special education tonight to really learn about our strengths in the district and how to get better. That's, that was the goal of these meetings is identifying the strengths that we have, then talking about the priorities that are in place and then how to further strengthen the priorities. That's what every meeting was about with each department. So on February fourth, we start off with transportation with Laurie Francis, who's our transportation director. And I'm just going to kind of give you highlights of the priorities that are going to come forward in the budget as opposed to talking about the whole discussion. So her priorities were to improving staff, getting two to three more drivers, also bus monitors and crossing guards. So if we know anybody, have an ability to tell anybody, we are hiring in those positions and desperately need those positions filled. Adding a part-time administrative position. There is a position that was advertised, that we've had advertised all of last year. If you remember, it was a full-time position as a, was an assistant director or something similar to that. That position was eliminated. We tried to hire something part-time that wasn't successful in that hiring. So now they're changing the job description to be a little bit more administrative to help Laurie with things like payroll and record keeping and things like that. So that is expected to be posted soon if it hasn't been posted already. But that is one of her priorities. And student safety was her priority. And what they're looking to do is to add stop arms to our buses, which is a way of adding cameras that will record those cars that do not stop for the bus.
Good.
That is going to require some buy-in with Gloucester Police Department. And I don't, I know those conversations are going to be had, they haven't been had yet because it's actually the police that will do the ticketing and finding and things like that. But that is one of her requests. She's also seeking grant funding on getting those cameras. So it may be an impact to the budget in some areas, but hopefully there's some grants to do that work too. Then we met with Grant Harris for I T. And first to say, I'm not knowledgeable in I T. So a lot of stuff he said to me sounded repellent, but I know it was all important. Cybersecurity and operations was his priority. He learned new security tools for I T and K three, K twelve landscapes, upgrading and expanding security systems, devices and applications, improving processes, workflow and project management of conflict projects, including shifting timelines. H R is an example of how they approved accountability in their systems last year and they want to enhance that type of work through all departments. Supporting learning, classroom technology with Chromebooks to all students and all staff. That way it's consistent that everyone in the district is working from the same device. And evidently Chromebook has a way of encrypting everything that is done on their, on, in their work. So that's a benefit to having Chromebooks as opposed to a different device is something that we learned. Supporting standardized testing, having secure and reliable testing platforms, managing student access, the technical, technology, technical support. So it was a lot of talk like that. Whatever he wants, he's on a good trajectory and we just want to keep, keep Grant happy because he's, there's an exceptional department with minimal staff that is working on many, many phone books and I T needed projects. And we are very grateful for it. So he's very focused, an expert in his knowledge in that department. And so while I might not understand the particulars of what he's requesting, just say yes to his funding is what I would say. Because it helps everybody. Then on February sixth, we had Andrea Parello come before us. She is charged about preschool, lovely lady. She's, she's making a lot of progress in, at the preschool. She wants to use early intervention data and needs assessment to develop more programs and do better partnering with preschool partners, which is Pathways, the Y M C A and Kindergartens. She wants to hold more monthly meetings and monitor Facebooks, increasing the capacity of staff was one of her priorities. That's in, under program development and then early childhood transitions, timely transition emplacements with further education for families, having goal alignment with the kindergarten and the pre-K, streamlining the process for preschool, the kindergarten, and identifying the support that's needed there. And staff with professional development, there's curriculum development, safety care training, onboarding for the new hires and substitutes that they need and a lot more. But great presentation with Andrea. Then we moved on to Amy Pescarello's presentation for the elementary schools, which was awesome. Very knowledgeable who are, who are departments. Very impressive. So you could probably get this report better than I am, but I'm just going to do it from a high level. So strong tier one instruction with targeted tier two and three interventions, which we really need to put a focus on after the cuts that were, that happened last year. Literacy lead is developing, I can't read my own writing, guiding documents for wit and wisdom. What was that?
They're starting to develop pacing guides to make sure that we're all, we're getting through all four modules. We're training just today on the last three days. Yes, yesterday, today.
Math is strengthened in efficient strategies, instruction, including back fluency, manipulative use of evaluating how we have to move forward over the next five years. Can you expand on that a little bit?
Yes, our math readers and our math coaches are really working on engagement strategies and really getting back fluency throughout all of our elementary classrooms until they're ready for the multi-year learning.
Okay, there you go. Special education and multilingual learners, increased coordination and implementation and delivery of special education and multilingual services across each building in the district. New I E P and implementation and documents, new curriculum, multilingual curriculum for newcomers into the district. And of course attendance is a priority to get to the pre-pandemic attendance levels. Curriculum instruction and professional development with curriculum that were improved through ongoing review, selection, training, implementation, alignment of standards, sequencing, pacing and continuous evaluation across all subjects and grade levels. New curriculum and the invest, is it investing history?
Investigating history.
Investigating history for grades five through seven and also new curriculum held in. And also new curriculum, um, health and physical education curriculum and new multilingual curriculum.
Yes, we're working on those.
Working on those. Um, instruction, continuous analysis and focus on instructional strategies to improve student learning with a focus on student engagement and rigor across the district. Managing instructional decisions based on current data. Um, the child study review was interesting to hear about, and implementing Gloucester Public Schools EL service guidelines. And then professional development, MTSS, multi-tiered systems of support, inclusive practices and the, with the model strengthened instruction practices with a focus on student engagement um, and further development of the new teacher academy. There was a lot that we did by Zoom, that was a Zoom meeting. And then tonight, um, we heard from the high school in O'Malley, um, and their priorities, um, for the high school. Um, communication and higher order thinking, um, they're revising the tenth grade ELA curriculum. Um, they're gonna have students reading, all students reading the same book. He talked about having to purchase two hundred books.
So they, they had previously would have a class set of books or two or three class sets of books, and they would rotate the units through the, the grade level. So every student got their unit, but they would share the book. The benefit they try, they do this year in ninth grade, they want to do in tenth grade next year of having the teachers go all along at the same pace is that they have better collaboration among teachers, they can more, make more interventions in real time, they can look at data sets, um, of how students are doing and make instructional decisions based on the data as they go through, and it elaborates more, it kind of makes sure all teachers are giving the same pace and the same emphasis to the curriculum. Um, and they've had really great success in ninth grade, so they're looking to that in tenth grade. The cost is, it has to be good for every student because they're not sharing. So it's not a huge cost, but it's a cost, but it's, it's worthwhile because it's giving teachers a better opportunity to collaborate and adjust.
And I had asked about why we wouldn't do, why not do a, um, book online? Um, and the studies just show that it's better to read from a hardcover book, um, as opposed to being online all the time with the, um, introduction of AI and all that that does online, so, um, the books are incredibly close. Um, they talked about max- maximizing staffing, um, more civic engagement course and world history course. Um, and talked about a dual enrollment program with Southern New Hampshire University, um, that is the new civil district this year. Um, STEM skills, concept, and problem solving to continue refining brain-based instruction, using STAR three sixty, math and reading data to inform decision-making. Professional development focused on teaching all students and improving the effectiveness of tier interventions. Again, maximizing staffing, and then preparation and support for post-secondary transition. Continue to support and combine diverse offerings, um, implement the comprehensive secondary transition curriculum to align with score. Um, continue support for student post-secondary three-tier planning, skill building, follow through with the help of community partners. Um, just making the days better with better education is what it comes down to, in my opinion. Um, a lot of good stuff from, um, the principal of the high school. And then O'Malley. Um, their priority was special education, ensuring appropriate staffing, keep hearing staffing, um, throughout this. So I expect in our budget that we're gonna see that request for appropriations. Um, to build a robust special education program, which we heard from tonight. Um, he did mention that Mike Jarvis's report and his would be similar. Um, develop a vision statement, entrance and exit criteria and philosophy for each of those programs, which is basically streamlining in-house, their in-house programming. Now, student engagement and curriculum, maintain and support curriculum resources, align O'Malley Academy, budget staffing process to compensate for the new CBA and sentencing of the twenty-first century funding. And we talked a lot about that tonight. The O'Malley Academy is funded by the Twenty-First Century Rant, um, which each year, um, the amount of grant money we get is less and less.
Every three years.
Every three years, right? So it's, we get a certain amount, say it's twelve hundred this year, three years later, I mean, I'm sorry.
About a hundred and twenty.
Hundred and twenty thousand, and then it goes down twenty thousand every three years. Um, we do have a third of our students enrolled in that program. It's very robust, it's very educational, it's, it's in high demand. Um, so we're gonna eventually have to talk about ways of supplementing that program, um, through our budget. Um, if we don't get other funding abilities to keep that building going, which is very important to us. Um, so you might hear some conversation about that, that during budget development as well, um, when that budget comes out. And then, um, he talked about facilities. As you know, we just did the windows over there, he's very impressed um, with the impact that those windows head to the building and the art that is on the outside of the building, the fish we've all seen. Um, that was a donation from the Gloucester Red Foundation, I believe, to help get that, um, art developed and the kids involved in doing it. Um, but as far as facilities, they focus on safety and creating welcome environment. Continued partner with the DPW to prioritize facility upgrades. Uh, I believe he's looking for some HVAC work to be done this year, specifically in the nurses' nursing department at the school. Um, but it's, it appears that, um, Principal Titus and the DPW, um, have a good relationship right now in talking about the needs, um, and it seems to be making progress, which is, was good to hear. Um, and then they talked about the need for cameras, um, internal and externally. There's some spots in the school that may need some extra monitoring. Um, he finds the cameras to be very helpful when there's an incident to go back and see what was reported. So there's some spots that, um, you, you may see that he requests some cameras. And that is my report, from a very high level. We really need to watch the Zoom meetings to get a full understanding of all the, um, good work and what's being done and what we can do to keep on a good path.
Good job capturing all that.
Yeah, sure.
Impressive.
Well, the next item of business is action. Um, we have some grants to accept. Um, I move that we accept the Gloucester Education Foundation O'Malley Art Installation Phase Two grant in the amount of fourteen thousand eight hundred ninety-three dollars, forty million plus.
Is this more fish or is it, I know they wanted to go around the building, so I don't know if that's what they're talking about.
Um, I don't think they quite know yet.
It's a continuation of that, of the fish, but it might be other, other sea animals.
It's part of that theme, it's continuation of that theme, okay.
Right, but it's, um, the students will have input like they did last night, whether it's a different school of fish or something else, it'll, it'll be complimentary.
Nice, okay.
Any other questions? Okay, um, all in favor, say aye. Okay, I move that we accept the Gloucester Education Foundation, O'Malley Science Center, UMass Marine Station at Hodgkins Co. partnership grant, the amount of six thousand three hundred dollars.
Yeah, that sounds interesting.
Um, so this is a partnership with New England Bio Labs, um, in the Science Center, uh, to kind of, so, um, Principal Titus in the budget, uh, meeting, BNF meeting talked about sustaining both O'Malley Academy and the Science Center, and this is one of the ways to, this is not necessarily for staffing, this is for equipment and things that went inside the lab to help maintain a robust curriculum there, yeah.
Yeah, is that the place that's like along the way to, uh, Lanesville?
Yeah, so the O'Malley Science Center is inside O'Malley.
Okay.
Um.
No, but you said Hodgins, the UMass Station is what you're talking, yeah.
Oh, yes. So it's a partnership, yeah.
Okay, uh, moved in second, you're all in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Uh, I move that we accept the fiscal year two thousand twenty-five Mass CEC Climate Critical ARPA grant, our first grant, um, strand A increase to two hundred and seventy-five thousand nine hundred ninety-six dollars. And I say a second. Okay. Maybe a little explanation.
Yeah, I was gonna say, tell me about that. Um, if you can. So this is for, I, I, it's work within, I believe it's at one of Brenda Waslick's, um, grants, and I don't, I don't have all the details of it, but it's just, it's to I'm just reading it, infrastructure grants is what, so it's to help with the CBT program, and I believe it is, um, climate control, so it's gonna be working within the, the shops to improve the climate.
Ventilation?
I think so, but I, I don't wanna miss out.
Information, we wanna vote?
I think so. Okay, I get more information for you then.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Okay, and, okay, and the last item of action is a vote for approval of the Gloucester High School competency determination.
Um, so that was that change of one line, um, stating that, um, students must have passed each of those courses.
So, I think they're ready to go with.
Yeah, I just, I just have lingering questions about, you know, after the vote, what has really changed? So we're, okay, we don't, we don't require the students to pass MCAS, but they're still taking MCAS because it's a federal and state requirement. They're not required to pass it, but now we're incorporating what was required from the MCAS to incorporate in our standards for graduation. That essentially what's going on?
So Desi has asked that we come up with a competency determination that shows that that determines whether students have learned the standards that were assessed through MCAS. So, um, MCAS assessed tenth, tenth grade ELA and math.
Yes.
So we need to make sure that we need to somehow assess that students have competency in tenth grade level ELA and math. So that's why we're, we talked about ninth and tenth during for ELA. Um, Gloucester goes beyond that and says all four years for ELA, our graduation requirements go a little beyond just tenth grade, uh, ELA. For math, it requires that we have, um, determined that they are competent in both, both geometry and algebra, because that gets you to the tenth grade math level, that's what the MCAS tests. Um, so we, we have, we are proposing that a passing grade in those courses demonstrates standards, the knowledge of standards, because we are ensuring that our courses cover the standards, and if they're passing those, in theory, they should be passing MCAS, right? So that's the determination. For science, it used to be biology that we would take. Um, it's a little more broad now with this proposal, that they have to have a passing grade in either biology, chemistry, introduction to physics, or engineering.
Yes.
Um, so it's giving a little more choice to which science you're, you're showing that you have competency in, but you still need to do that. And that is in addition to our, what we already have as our graduation requirements. So they already have to have four years of math, they already have to have fifteen years in science. They already have to have all the other things that are part of graduation. But we just have to let the state know, how are we showing that our students have demonstrated competency in the standards that MCAS measures? Because we can no longer use MCAS to demonstrate that anymore.
Just the test.
Right.
Not the content.
The content, we are still required to teach.
And they require the pass.
And they are required to pass. But no, no longer can we use the MCAS as a measurement for that because of the law that was passing of it.
Yeah, I just, I don't know, I, I'm trying to escape the, I, the thought that this is quite silly, that we have this change. I know that the people voted on this.
This is a state vote, so.
It's a state vote, it's a state vote, and all, every school district has to come up with the way they're reacting to the vote, and it can show competency, and this was the proposal that we put forward.
Yeah, so, so basically instead of one standard, we now have, I don't know how many school districts, three hundred. Right, so, uh, but it makes sense to me, I mean, it, the way, it's, it's basically the same thing, it's just you're not passing it on the MCAS test.
You're passing it on the class.
Well, I, I, I'm not in doubt that, that we're capturing what the I'm, I have no doubt that we, you know, this isn't doing the right thing. I'm just, I'm just, I guess, in my own head trying to figure out, you know, that obviously has caused us more work because of what passed, right? And all of a sudden we gotta come, you know, incorporate, um, these standards into our regular requirements for graduation.
That's what referendum questions do.
Yeah, but, but also at the same time, giving more leeway in the math and sci, I mean, the sciences as far as those four options we mentioned.
Right.
That's like the biggest change.
And it's, we're not lowering our standards for graduation anymore.
I never said that.
I, no, no, I'm just being clear, I'm just being clear on that. And, and we are just identifying what within our own graduation requirements, what counts for that competency determination. So we, we didn't really add anything, the only thing we changed is we identified which classes or which grade levels would count for the competency determination. And the largest change, which actually is a positive, is we have a, a different variety of science classes that to students can take. Um, something that we experience all the time is our, our biology, the biology test is very language-heavy or vocabulary, and for ML learners, it's very, it's labor-intensive to, to get all of that in, and whereas an intro to physics might be more math-based, and we might have more success to show that, so or an engineering is more hands-on applied science, so it's actually giving us a little more variety um, that we can count for having, um, competency in science.
Yeah, I take that as a positive.
So there's, you know, it, it's more work, more work, for example, Cook and I and Laura Carlson largely, um, worked, have done the work. Um, and once we document it, it's just the way that we're, we're moving forward.
Yes, and, and I guess the last question is, okay, like, before we would be able to look at, we're still taking these MCAS tests.
Yes.
So we'll still be able to look at that data to evaluate, uh, certain, you know.
So the MCAS data will still be used for accountability
Right.
for schools and school districts.
And then there will be a state report and all that stuff.
There'll still be a state report. You'll still hear from me or, or a, a new committee about how, um, how we're doing on and progressing on MCAS.
Yeah, I think people were obviously like misled to believe that MCAS would go away. Uh, and that's a shame.
So, so that's a political.
Yeah, I didn't like how the.
We're not, okay, that's all right.
Can't really, okay, so, that's one motion for, okay. Motion, uh, regarding competency determination for the Gloucester Public Schools that includes credits earned by receiving a passing grade, grade for the course.
Second.
Wait, we're just voting that one line?
Well.
No, no, that's presented. So, so that's the one line that changed from when I presented.
Yeah, I wasn't here last week, but, um, so I said, but, um, I just, the motion just sounded like the one.
Yeah, it has presented.
Yeah.
All in favor, say aye. Can I just ask, so I'm hearing through the news, I watch the news all day long, um, that the governor is trying to come out with a new test? Is that true?
There's discussion of Desi trying to.
Trying to come out, a new test is gonna come out, so.
I don't, I don't expect anything to come out quickly.
Right.
So I, we'll, we'll see what this comes out.
But these are our.
These are our competency determinations.
Until something else comes out.
Yeah, and the timeliness for this was, we need to, we need to have this voted on this last twenty-five. That, that's why there's a time.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Okay, so, uh, we are going to go into executive session, um, and we come out to adjourn, and the I move that we go into executive session pursuant to executive session purpose three of Mass General Law thirty-eight, section twenty-one A to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Gloucester Massachusetts Nurses Association uh, and ASME clerical unit A and unit C.
Second.
Okay, move to second. Roll call, roll please, Steph.
Yeah. Mr. McKee.
Yes.
Miss Texie, our friends.
Yes.
Miss Clancy.
Yes.
Mr. Valer.
Yes.
Maya Verga.
Yes.
Miss Weisant.
Yes.
Mr. Minnie.
Yes.
That concludes the public portion of our meeting. Good night, everyone.